After seven and we have a quorum. And first order of business is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Happy New Year, everybody. This is our first meeting in 2018.
Happy New Year.
And I hope it's going to be a good year. So, the first order of business after the pledge is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes. You may remember at the last meeting, we punted on approval of the November 15th meeting minutes. And we now have the minutes from December 13th. So, I entertain a motion on the first one. Melissa?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
I noticed on the meetings, on the minutes for November 15th, that we did in fact add meeting dates in the summertime, June, July, and August. But those dates do not show up on the board, on the online calendar, which leads me to wonder whether they were forwarded to the town correctly as part of our required submission of meeting dates. Do we know that we?
Yes. The proper was submitted to the town.
So, the June, July, and August dates? Okay. So, they're just missing from the website?
Yeah. We have some website issues that we're trying to resolve and get the board section updated.
Okay. That's all right. And the other comment was on the December minutes, it says that we approved the minutes from November 15th, but we later rescinded that approval. So, I'm not so sure that the minutes should show that we approved something that we later rescinded.
Correct. So, should we?
So, I think it's appropriate to correct the minutes for December to eliminate the line saying we approved the minutes from November 15th.
I agree.
Any other changes to the minutes? Additions? Edits? Okay. All those in favor?
As amended.
As amended. Correct. Any opposed? No, they passed. Thank you. They've been approved. And now, we are on to public comment. And we have Mr. Torres here with us this evening, and he signed up to speak with us. A Happy New Year to you.
I'm here to clarify things that were said on the October 11th board meeting after I left the board meeting about the Barros stem lottery and my son, Israel Torres Jr., and how the lottery happened and the way it was explained here. On December 7th, 2016, my wife applied for the Barros stem lottery, and we received an email with an application ID confirmation that we applied. On January 10th, 2017, we received an email about applications being opened, which we already applied a month prior. March 15th, 2017, we received a letter about the lottery schedule with an ID number. March 29th, the day of the lottery, which I myself attended the lottery. The way the lottery works, when it happened, when I came to the lottery, you have an ID number, they start, they start from eighth grade all the way to kindergarten. So, I was there for three hours. When they put my list out for the kindergarten list, my ID number was there, the ID number that we received at home, we filled out the application and everything. I took a picture of the ID number, and I have a 33-page binder, which I handed out before to everybody that was here, but you wasn't here. So, I have one for you.
Neither was Ms. Ray.
Okay. I'll try to get one for you next board meeting. So, I have everything on file. The way it works, after the board meetings, which I was there for like three hours, there's like 200 people there. The same day at night, they put all the lists online, which was the unofficial list that Murphy talked about on the October 11th. My brother, his wife, their daughter applied. Their friends, like four years ago, they also applied. A coworker of mine, I know people that applied for the Barros stem. The same process I went through, the same process they went through. So, I don't know what Murphy was saying about the unofficial list that my son was not selected. He was selected. I had an ID number, have all the papers. If you have time, I put my wife's phone number in the back and my number in the back. So, whatever was said here, it was a lie. I been to, I went, I, my wife works during the day, I work at night. So, I went to the board meeting, I was there for three hours. Every list came out. Imagine, they started from eighth grade, in town, out of town, in town, out of town, waiting list. And the way they explain it to you, that's not the way it happened and the way it's been happening for years. So, on April 11th, that's when we received a call about using a preference twice, which we already applied, December 7th. The memo came out January 10th. We already had a confirmation ID, everything. Like she said, that they made a mistake about not letting us know about using the preference twice. We already applied. We did everything the way we were supposed to do. So, the way that, because I think they were explaining to you how it happened, whatever they said, that's not the way it happened.
Mr. Torres, your three minutes is up. Is there anything you'd like to say to wrap up this evening briefly?
No.
And then, you can leave whatever you want to leave with us?
Yes. I have this, this is plain to you, when we received every email about the conference ID, the day of the lottery, I took a picture. When the district placed all the list online, everything is here, all the emails we receive, everything is in here. So, if you have time, you can take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like, I can share, make a copy and share it with Ms. Ray if that would be helpful to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
That was Ms. Ray.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? No other people have signed up? Is there anybody in the audience that didn't sign up? Okay. So, we're going to move on to reports from the superintendent.
Thank you, and Happy Years to all of you. I would like to start with some recognition and celebration. The first recognition, I want to recognize the middle school. There's no one here from the middle school, but I'd like to recognize them. We are part, the middle school is part of a program called Achieve 3000. That is a reading program that is used across the country, in middle school across the country. And we receive an email telling us that our middle school, Wyndham Center, Wyndham Middle School was recognized, won the National Read to Succeed Contest from Achieve 3000. So, we expect to get some more information. It's based on the number of students reading, the number of texts that they read, et cetera, et cetera. But with those receivers, that Wyndham Middle School won the National Read to Succeed Contest, a school that raised toward accelerated literacy achievement. So, let's give them a round of applause. Yeah. So, we're just. And who gave that to us? The Achieve 3000. That is a, is a reading program that is used across the country for reading, for middle school, grade five to eight. Some other recognition, and we want to tank, we have three students that participated in the National School Lunch Week, and they were selected and received prizes. Yaden Carnales from Natchitoches, who attends Wyndham. Jasmine Flores, who attended Wyndham. And Ismael Lintrom, who attended Wyndham Center. So, they did a great job, and they participated and won prizes in the National School Lunch Week. So, these are students, we want to congratulate them. Great event, the high school winter concert on December 20th. We want to thank all board members that attended and staff that attended. What a great event that was presented. I'm not going to go through all of these for your reading, but just to mention a couple that are important. The award nights, Award of Excellence Ceremony, December 18th, well-attended, lots of parents and board members that attended. But this time, it was very, a little bit different, that we had community awards for community members, Mr. Bill Powers, Mayor Dr. Kalushy, and also the Willie Radio Station. So, we want to thank them. A great gift was given to Wyndham, a one that is very valuable. Mr. Correa, Carlos Correa, is a parent of two precious young daughters at Wyndham, Wyndham. And he donated a high-quality guitar to use by the music teacher on the student. So, we want to thank Mr. Correa very much so. To the Department of Community Engagement and Family Partnership of Wyndham, we want to thank them for their celebration, Three Kings Day celebration. We had 497 participants that attended. We had Senator Murphy, Senator Mae Flester, Representative Johnson, and it was so well-attended that definitely, we want to thank the Three Kings that participated. The Google Classroom, we just started our Google Classroom with our one-to-one Chrome initiative in sixth and ninth grade. And so, I am very happy because we are in Google Classroom. And when you go to all these great schools, they have Google Classroom. So, we want to thank the people that are making this possible. We have a committee that is co-chair by teachers and members. Mr. Brandon O'Neil is co-chair, and Mrs. Katie, Katie Kedaski? Carrie Kedaski is the other co-chair. And we have several teachers from the middle school and ninth grade. And so, they move in this initiative, they are the committee, they're working on the plan, they're working on PD, they're having another PD on the 23rd. They're very excited, and so are the kids, are very excited, ready to receive calls from parents that are excited that their kids have, particularly in the sixth grade, the Chromebook. So, we want to congratulate them. Those, some information about the budget process. We already finished all the meetings with all the principals and all the departments presenting their, I think Tracy's the only one that, that, that we're still working and getting our budget. But all the other departments presented their budget. And we want to let you know that we have the first community forum, budget forum on the 17th at 5:30 here at the high school. Then, we have a workshop on the 31st. And then, we have another community forum, March 1st, and I believe February 21st, budget workshop and community forum. So.
Dr. Garcia? Can you tell our new members, and refresh it for me, because I don't remember, the 31st is a board meeting technically? It's a budget workshop?
Um.
And the 17th?
The workshop is a.
The 17th is a public forum?
Yeah.
So, the workshop is for board members?
Yes.
And the public forum is for everybody, including board members?
So, in the budget forum, what happens is that people comes and speak about what they would like to see remain in the budget, what initiative they would like to see, what might need to go in the parking lot. So, basically here, the vision of the school district, here are the priorities, what priorities do you support? And so, that's the conversation. And the budget workshop is where the board, we present to the board costs, the cost of transportation, the cost of special ed, the cost of salaries and benefits, retirement, et cetera, et cetera. And so, we work with the board, where are the increases and where are the decreases? And I believe last year, we did give the community opportunity, a couple minutes, 15 or 30 minutes to ask questions at the end of the workshop. Dr. Murphy, do you remember? I don't remember if you gave an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the workshop. Well, the workshops are open to the public, and anyone can come to the workshop.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
The 31st, what time?
I don't know the exact time, Mrs. Lambert. They usually after 5:30 or 7:00. I don't remember the workshop.
For the budget workshop?
Margaret, it's just, you scheduled that as a matter of fact, and the first one is going to happen on the 16th, not the 17th?
No, wait.
So, it's Tuesday evening is the first budget forum?
It's the 16th. I, yeah, I haven't confused, it's the 16th.
The one for the public, open to the public.
Actually.
I mean, they're all open to the public, but.
Right. You're right. It's Tuesday the 16th. I don't know why I'm saying the 17th, because I was always the 17th in my mind. It's Tuesday the 16th at 5:30. Here at the high school, the first one.
Right. What time is the workshop at? Because that's the one that the board members are supposed to be at, and I have to make sure that I can get here.
I think that one is scheduled at 7:00. I don't remember. We'll have to.
Can you let us know tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the 21st on here is another one, but that's also our Board of Ed Retreat?
These dates, the dates have changed since the 17th.
Yeah.
Okay. So, tomorrow, can we get a revised schedule with the actual dates?
I just need to make sure I can get out of work on time and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And there's not swim meets and stuff like that. If there's a swim meet, I'll let you know I'll be late. But I just want to make sure there's no conflict, because the 21st, if we're starting early for a Board of Ed Retreat, I don't know that I can get here that much earlier for budget form.
So, I should, my apologies, Mrs. Lambert.
Okay.
I should pick up that. The board retreat is the 21st, so we can have a board workshop on the 21st. So, I should pick up that. But for sure, secure the 16th, Tuesday the 16th, is the first community budget forum, and that's at 5:30 here in the media center, here in the.
And then, 31st, there's something, and you'll let us know what time tomorrow?
Yeah. That's probably.
So, I think it would be helpful if we could get these dates into the calendar online?
Yes. We go back and look at them.
I just listened to this discussion, and I still have a hard time remembering it. It'll be much easier if I can look at it.
Well, I glanced over them when I went through the board packet, but now that I'm looking at my calendar, I'm like, okay, the 17th, the 16th, the 31st. I need times to make sure that I can.
So, we have it, we have it scheduled first.
We should have the dates and the times and the places.
We all need times.
So, we have it scheduled the 17th, the 1st, but what happened is that Barros also wanted to have the open house. So, then, we moved ours to the 16th. So, in my head, in my mind, I'm still talking about the 17th, but it's the 16th.
Okay. So, for the members of the public that are listening to this confusing conversation, it will be posted online as soon as we possibly can. But the most immediate one is on the 16th at 5:30 PM, the 16th of January at 5:30 PM here at the high school.
Media Center.
Media Center, right here, in this room.
Yeah. And so, Janet, let's go and change it also on the budget calendar, Chris? Because I know, I'm getting my information from the budget calendar, so we're going to change that up here.
Okay. And just might I ask that, you know, for Ildah's, for some of our work schedules, I know Melissa with the coaching and Ildah with her schedule and me commuting, it's really impossible to have meetings that many board members can attend as early as 5:30 in the evening. 6:30 or after would be much better for us.
The budget workshops are at 7:00. The last year, they were at 7:00.
Thank you.
The budget workshop was at 7:00 last year.
Thank you.
This one at 5:30 is because there's another event taking place, and we want to combine both of them.
You want to capitalize on it.
Capitalize on it, right. That's why we, there will be some members of the community here, and so, we want to capitalize on that opportunity.
Okay.
Actually, the Latino parents are meeting that day. And so, because we know we have a group of parents meeting here, we want to capitalize on that.
That one is on the calendar.
Thanks. Okay. So, the Kramer move, those are your information. Here is the, I don't want to call it tentative timeline, but the one that we're currently following for the move. We will be putting some information out to the public by the end of this week or beginning of next week, communicating to the public and to the staff and to the community what departments are moving, where they're located, how to get there. I believe Mr. Pavón, Special Education, Public Services, and Community Partnership are moving at the end of this week. And so, we will be putting something out to the public, telling them where they're located. The phone numbers are not changing, so that's the good thing. But our communication will go out, and people know.
Is there a thought of putting a sign on the front door of the Kramer Building that, so that when people come up and they think they're going to go see Mr. Pavón, for example, that they, it says that that office, you know, which offices have moved as they're moving?
Outgoing voicemails, too. Like if somebody doesn't get you at your office, you know, just to let you know, we've now moved to High Street, blah, blah, blah. And maybe signage out front.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be coming in the side entrance, yes?
They become, no, front entrance. Margaret has a whole plan, a house plan to put out and communicate. But Margaret has a whole plan. And actually, I heard Margaret and Janet today preparing something for Friday about how they want to be able to communicate that. And also, Eric downstairs is the receptionist downstairs. So, he has been already informed that he will have a little brochure telling people where to go, et cetera, et cetera, greeting people when they come in.
I know the high school front office often gets overwhelmed, and if people are confused, we need to make sure that that's well-staffed for this kind of interim right here.
So, I'm more concerned about the coming through the front of the high school, and the high school people have to tell them, okay, you have to go around. I think I'm more concerned about that than going to Kramer, because Eric is right there. And so, Eric will receive them and tell them. But the high school, they can get a lot of traffic if people are coming up front.
Well, until the ground thaws, can we get like a sandwich board that has arrows that point like, "Special Ed, da-da-da, this way." "Main Office." Not that they're supposed to go right when they come in that entrance anyways.
Sure. Let's get, I want to get, do something like that, to put some signs, okay?
Spanish and English, I'm assuming you're on top of that?
I'm, that, Spanish, English, and German.
German, too.
Okay. For Chris and I.
Okay.
Okay. Barros Lottery, some information about the advertisement of Barros Lottery that started yesterday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, on the 8th, and the process that we use them for advertise in Spanish and also in English, flyers, online, different this time, a very important feature this time is that we will have centers, four different center, one at Eastcon, Kramer Building, Salvation Army, Wyndham Heights, where people can come to apply for the Barros Lottery, and there will be someone there to help them. Because we're making the process more online, so we have incentives, we're time open, and there will be someone at the center to help them apply at these different locations. Eastcon, like I said, Kramer Building, Salvation Army, and Wyndham Heights. So, I'm not going to go over all this information there, and in the weekly packet, I did give you some information about the benefits of Eastcon conducting this process from application, notification, and the lottery process.
Dr. Garcia?
Yeah.
I know that Ms. Lambert had a question about the.
I'm just wondering where the funding came from this. It was a sizable amount of money, and I'm wondering, it wasn't in last year's operating budget as far as I could find. So, I'm wondering where $20,000 came from that we found to, and I think that especially with the move of central office right now and the chaos that's going on, this is probably our best bet this year. I'm not positive this is the best use of such a substantial amount of money, but I'm concerned about where this money's come from. We haven't seen a budget transfer that I know of for this.
Because we have not paid for, we have not paid for this yet.
But we still have to.
Yeah. We know we have to pay that free, yeah.
Even if we haven't made the transfer yet, we still have to pay for it, and I don't know where those funds are coming from.
So, there's a position in central office that I did not fill, that somebody resigned, and I have not filled that position for the rest of the year, that salary. So, there is some remaining of that salary, and I will take that to pay this for us.
Can we get an update, then, when we do our budget timeline, our budget process, whatever, of positions that didn't get filled and the financial dollars that go along with that? So, I don't want the perception to be, and I've heard it from some people out there, and I hate those people that say, "I've talked to lots of people, and I've heard," but I've heard from some people out there, you know, did it come out of the slush fund? And we don't keep a slush fund, we're not allowed to keep a slush fund. So, and I'm sure you've heard this too, Lynn, going, you know, being on the Board of Finance, that, you know, oh, the Board of Ed, you know, pads their budget and has a ton of extra money. But when we do things like this, it appears that we can find $20,000, which is one of the reasons that I asked.
So, you're right, and I thank you. I thank you for explaining to people that we don't have a slush fund. It's very sad that they start from that negative framework. We do that from that deficit framework. So, I thank you for explaining to them. During the budget workshop, those are one of the things that we address. Chris and I address salaries, wages, position fill, position not fill, where we're getting money from, the grants, decreasing of the grant, increasing. So, those are all addressed during the budget workshop. So, we happy to, actually, today, we're working on the grants, on the increase. And so, we address grants, what we're getting, what we're not getting compared to last year. We address increase of staff, decrease of staff. All of that is handled during the budget workshop.
Just an explanation of, you know, a staff that wasn't, central office position, what it is for the board for our budget workshops. It doesn't necessarily have to be part of the whole public thing, because they may not want to know that or understand all of that. But, but just, you know, so we know that we didn't fill six positions, which left us with an extra this much. But next year, we have to fill them. We're not intending on filling them. They're not coming in the budget, they're staying in the budget, so we can make those comparisons, kind of like crossing things out when we do policy changes and stuff like that, showing us exactly where it's coming from.
So, and I think every year, we get better with the budget process?
We have.
Now, loads, a lot of staff information. So, it has both certified staff.
And non-certified staff.
And total staffing. In the back, and it's multi-year kind of a look, so you can see where head counts run up and down.
And also, for school and for department, we do have that.
And a total at the end.
And then, the total amounts attached to that?
At the end, right.
Okay.
So, I think we, I'm very confident, and feel very confident, that we have a much better rigorous budget process than when I came here in 2000.
It's at least with head count, we're much more, we didn't include that before last year's did. We're going to continue.
Do you have a question here or a comment?
Well, I think it might be useful for people to understand that the total budget is around $60 million. And the budget that we put together in the spring and that the voters voted on is a forecast that essentially says what we intend to do with every penny of the $60,000, but nobody is a perfect forecaster. People resign when you didn't expect them to. It may take a month or two to hire them. So, some positions during the year, you know, we've got 1,000 employees roughly, it's not unusual that some positions are going to be vacant for a month or two. When they're not vacant, we don't have to pay people. And as a result, it becomes possible to move some money around within the budget. It's a perfectly good question to say, where did the money come from?
And you realize.
But the idea that you can, that you ought to be able to find $20,000 in a $60 million budget, sure, you can find $20,000. I mean, that's a small fraction of $60 million. It's a good question to ask, okay, so where did you find it? And I can remember a famous senator years ago talking about the federal budget, a billion here, a billion there, pretty soon, you're talking about real money. So, in our case, $10,000 or $20,000 here, $10,000 or $20,000 there. Yes, it will add up after a while. But in any specific instance, if it's necessary to find $20,000, it's possible to find it.
Yes, it is. And I think that the questions that are being asked today and what Mr. Johnson has assured us we'll be hearing about in more detail when we go through the budget workshops will help us as Board of Ed members when we're speaking with the community and talking to people on other boards, and, you know, that we will be better equipped to be able to answer those questions about where that money's coming from, too.
If I may, I did not put it in my weekly, but if I may, you're welcome to send us to send me questions or thoughts that you have about the budget, things that you think you want to know, even if you don't have the precise question. So, I would like to know about, I don't know, buses, for example, or something, or special ed buses, or pre-K buses. That helps us a lot when Mr. Johnson and I meet to develop or outline what to present to you. So, feel free, feel free to email me whatever question you have, and that will help move the presentation much, much farther and to answer your, to answer your question. But I think you want to be pleased with more information that we, every year, we're adding more and more information to the budget process. And we also making sure, for example, that HR, for example, is much more intertwined with the process. They have a better system now, have given us the information of who is on board, where they're located, what department, what grade level, what are they making. And years ago, it was very difficult to get that information. But over the years, we have been able to fine-tune the processes and the department and make things much, I think, easier for us.
Thank you.
So, we welcome your question, your concern, to send us an email, and that will definitely Send us an email, and that will definitely help us. And I do want, so that's it. Compañeros Lottery, again, some information again. Their session will be conducted also in open house in January 17, much smaller scale than the Compañeros Lottery than the Barros Lottery. And here's the information of their open house. The district calendar, I want to thank the district calendar committee. Here are their names. We have people from all the different departments and different district calendars, from secretaries to union presidents to administrators and to teachers. So what you have there is, I would want to say, a tentative calendar for your review. Between now and the business meeting in favor, you may see some minor revision as we continue to speak with people about the calendar. There will be some minor revision, but you will be informed of those revisions before you come to vote on the calendar. So the calendar was done, a couple sessions, and taking consideration the regional calendar also. But again, I do know that there will be some minor revision to this calendar, nothing that impacts starting and ending date of the calendar, nothing major or that will impact the entire school district, but I will make sure that you get that information.
And when do we vote on that normally?
The next business meeting in February.
Okay, good.
So you do have some time to get the information. And also you have for your first reading, it says here that the Board of Education approved the revised policy. Please forgive us, it's not, this is not the homeless policy, it's not for approval, it's for your first reading.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing them, we'll move on to committee reports. Is there anything to report from the Finance and Audit Committee? I know we've had holiday time and breaks ensued between, but anything new?
Well, we scheduled a meeting before our next board.
I think it's next Wednesday, I think it's.
The Finance and Audit.
24th?
Is that coming? I thought it was before a board meeting. Oh, it's the 17th. Nope, you're right, it's next Wednesday, it's the 17th.
Okay. At what time? We don't have a BOE meeting next Wednesday.
It's going, I believe we're planning to schedule, we're going to have it at, I think it says 6:00 on the calendar.
Okay.
And that's on the web calendar, and that's fine with me.
Okay.
So, and the agenda will be to review the budget process and look at the documents of where we are with the reports that have already been sent in and make sure that things are on track and that we pick up whatever questions folks might have as quickly as possible rather than having them pop up at the end of the process, as they sometimes do.
Okay, thank you. Anybody's welcome to attend that if they want to go hear more about that. And School Planning and Design Committee, Paul Kalasian is not here today, but Tracy is on that committee. Is there anything you want to report?
We meet tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
At 6:00 at the Kramer Conference Room.
I spoke to Mr. Kalasian this evening. He will be attending tomorrow night.
Thank you for that clarification. The Policy Committee, Melissa, you and Ilga are both on the committee, or you guys planning a meeting soon?
Our next meeting is the 25th, Fourth Thursday we usually meet. Those are now at 5:30. Our last meeting, we just talked about the homeless policy and the changes that Mr. Stover suggested.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I request that somebody on the Policy Committee takes a look at the policy for staff to be able to drive students to places? The Germany trip, which isn't on the agenda and happens next month, so we haven't approved it, but it happens next month. The Germans have already bought their tickets, so they're on their way.
So do we need to add that to the agenda as an assignment?
We don't have any information about it, and I didn't realize it until I just thought of it now when I was thinking about the, anyways, we have to go pick the students up at the airport, and staff can't drive, so the person who's coordinating this is not able to drive to pick up the students. We have a staff member who has a certification on her license or something who can, but going forward, I know for various teams and stuff like that, when there are small groups that have to go to an athletic event or something like that, often the district rents a bus or a van, and the coach drives. So I'm not sure how, and sometimes the coaches are staff, and sometimes they're not, I'm not sure how the disconnect is there between a coach being able to drive but a different staff member not being able to drive. When the students went to Spain a few years ago, we had to rent a bus, which had an expense to it, and there's no line item for either of these trips, the Germany or the Spanish one. So we have no real budget other than what the parents pay, and it starts to become a hardship, because while they're here, we pay for all the events they go to for our sons or daughters and our exchange students. So Andrew's going on the German exchange, so I'm going through this right now, but, so there's no budget for that. So I'm wondering if there's a way to amend the policy to make it, and I know insurance will pay a factor in this as well, but to amend the insurance to make it so a staff member could drive or to clarify why athletic coaches and band directors and stuff like that could drive students, but in this case, a staff member can't. I don't know where the disconnect is. I haven't really looked too in-depth at the policy. I glanced over it and.
So I don't know if there's a disconnect. Let's bring the policy up. We do have a policy. The board not too long ago approved that policy. Actually, we worked on that not too long ago because, for, how many years ago?
I think it was a year.
A year ago. So the board did approve.
Right, we looked at it.
The policy. So we can bring it back to see what is the question. You know what, I can't drive the school cars either, and the thing is because I'm not on whatever list they need to be, so I can't drive, so I have to drive, and they have to drive me if I use any vehicle from the district. So I think we can look into that definitely. Let's bring it back.
I see both, I saw both the members write this down, so.
I can email one and ask him if we're on the agenda.
Go ahead. I just, I want to make a clarification. I don't want to penalize coaches, because certainly, I know, like, I'm a swim team, and Mrs. Lassard's husband coaches for the swim team, and I'm not trying to put her in an awkward position, but when we go to ECCs, there's 18 kids on the team, and four or five of those are divers, so they rent a 15-passenger van to take the swimmers to ECCs instead of a full bus. Or, you know, if it's late or if it's on the weekend, it saves the district money in the long run, too. I'd like them to still be able to do that. I don't want them to lose that privilege. But I don't understand why a German exchange coach or, you know, advisor or whatever couldn't drive to Boston to pick up kids.
Who said they couldn't do that?
Well, there was a miscommunication at any point, so I just want to make sure it's clarified going forward.
We'll put it in the policy and see what it is.
Right. The students are coming, students are going there in April, but the ones that are coming here in February, there's already been arrangements made, but I know there's a Spanish trip on the horizon that we approved as well, so.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
We will check into it.
Yeah. Executive Committee is going, we're trying to get a meeting scheduled. There were some scheduling conflicts for the meeting that was supposed to happen tomorrow evening, and at this point, I believe, Janet, we're looking at the 24th.
Yeah, we're looking at 24th.
Yes. Right. So once we get confirmation, I will let the rest of you know. I know there's been some interest in knowing when that meeting is. So I wanted to put on the agenda, and I actually had mentioned this earlier, I'm always interested as the new chair in hearing from members of the board, particularly people who've been on the board longer, about, you know, things that you think that we need to revisit or bring up for more discussion, and newer board members, we all may have different ideas about things. So I was curious this evening whether or not any of you wanted to offer any topics that you would like to have considered, have us give consideration to putting on a future Board of Ed regular meeting or workshop topics. Anything that comes to mind that any of you want to share this evening?
I think the only thing that was.
Can you pull your mic closer just a little? You've got a soft voice and.
I pushed it away because it was picking up everything, like the tapping of the pen and everything, so. Anyway, the only thing that I was interested in was revisiting the public comment policy, and that's something that the Policy Committee is going to look at at the end of January, so.
So you will be coming to us with some recommendations on that then?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Are we getting SAT and PSAT data at the board retreat? Because we haven't gotten it yet.
He's on the board.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't thinking about it until just right now when you asked.
So the top thing on my mind is, let's see, I can't remember whether it's Sweeney or Wyndham Center that was, that's been the longest since renovation. One of them was renovated in '64, and the other one was renovated in '68. So both of them are 50 years or more since they were renovated. North Wyndham School was last renovated in 1986. And if we get around to, if we do undertake renovating those buildings, by the time we're done, the middle school will have arrived at more than 30 years old, probably. So our facilities plan that we put together some years ago has become dated, I think. And it would be a good idea, I think planning and design is already starting, to think about doing a needs assessment, which I will then, and that's the place that should start, bring it to the board. But we do need to take a look at our facilities plan. It's wonderful that we're going to renovate the high school, but we've got obsolete facilities at the K-8 level as well, and we need to, you know, start moving on those topics. The other thing kind of that's on my mind that sort of falls out of what Mrs. Lambert has brought up is, I'm still concerned about the number of tests, standardized or otherwise, and assessments that our students are required to take, along with midterm exams or final exams. The number of times that it's put your books away and pull out a pencil and answer the following questions. I think we need to look at the schedule and how much of that goes on and see if we can reduce the amount of time that's spent testing and increase the amount of time that's spent teaching.
So are you suggesting that that might be a workshop topic? To get that information and get a discussion?
Yes, it would, because we'd have to get the staff to essentially give us a layout on the kinds of tests that are being done. We've got, and they're not the same, at elementary and middle and high school, so that, you know, it's the amount of testing that's done and the kind of testing that's done varies by how old the children are, and then the schedules. So I think we really need to understand what's going on there and then ask ourselves whether or not, I suspect that some of it's redundant.
Okay, well, I will confer with the superintendent and the staff, and we'll figure out when we can get the kind of information that we need in order to get a presentation and then open it up for some discussion and deliberation on the board's part. Does that make sense?
We start talking with some faculty that are from the high school about midterm, and what we're hearing from teachers is that no midterm is obsolete for them, it doesn't, it's not aligned to anything. So we have, we started having that conversation right now.
Okay, so that's a good topic, and the facilities plan update will take the, we'll assume that the plan, building, plan and design building committee will begin that discussion soon, and I'm sure that if not, then we'll figure out a way to.
That's where it should come from. We should, we should sort of plan on having it.
Well, it's helpful, it's helpful for board members to have a sense of where we are with that. I know some people may be tired of hearing me say this, but when we did have a tri-board on this issue earlier on, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, it was representatives from the three boards, and we actually did, it was very good because it involved elected leaders from the other boards, having a better understanding of what was up with the facilities. And we did take several months, and with the principal of each school and, you know, the Wayne Donaldson equivalent, that group actually did tours of all the school buildings in town, and it was very enlightening for people on the other boards who didn't understand what was up in the schools as far as the facility maintenance and space constraints and the kind of circumstances that teachers and social workers and other people were working in. So it might be worth thinking about when might be a good time to do that kind of thing again. Just want to put that on the table. I mean, that was literally like 10 or 12 years ago that that happened.
Did it go to NatJog? It went to NatJog?
We went to every building, not in one fell swoop, and like over a course of a couple of months. Like we'd schedule, you know, this evening, we're going to go to North Wyndham School, and the principal and the facilities people were prepared to give us what was a relevant tour of that, not just walking down the hallways and looking in the classrooms, but looking at the closet where somebody was having meetings, or, you know, with things like that, so. So it was not just, it was not just like the roof leaking or whatever, it was all those kinds of things. Or walking around Sweeney at the time and getting locked out, you know, when you're trying to go between the buildings in the field, you know, in the yard, and, yeah, so. Anyway.
I think that's, if we do a needs assessment and we understand what kinds of facilities we need to deliver the kind of educational program that we should be delivering, then we can take a look at the facilities and their capacity to meet those needs, and I think we'll find that there are lots of places where we don't have the capacity to do things that we ought to be doing. And then it certainly would be useful to provide tours and other opportunities for the public and other elected officials from other boards to actually see and understand what the facilities are compared to what they need to be.
Right. Anything else that people want to put out there?
Can we get an update? I'm sure it'll come during the budget process, too, but maybe during the retreat or something like that about the influx of new students that have come into the district? And how that breaks down classroom-wise? Do we have to add? I'm sure it'll come during the budget process, but it's something we might need to talk about during the retreat, too.
Actually, I was saying something else on Friday. We have a report that we get every week of how many kids come to the district. I think I used to send it every Friday, I don't know if I send it a couple days. Where they're located, what grade level, so you can see what schools and what grade level. So Janet, actually, I got it this day. Can we send it out again on Friday?
Thank you. Thank you.
But I mean, how it's going to affect.
But there was an issue at the last meeting that was brought up.
The number of classrooms, if we need an extra fourth grade classroom at Sweeney or an extra.
Not yet, not yet.
Right, but we're headed in that direction. And what kind of movement we've had to do amongst students where their home school might be Sweeney, and we've sent them to NatJog or Wyndham Center or North Wyndham.
We have impacted transportation a little bit. I mean, Jay has been very helpful to us and work with us because we have to make some transportation adjustments for some.
Speaking of transportation, I'd like to congratulate you and Mr. Rivers for solving one problem involving schoolchildren waiting on a corner where they weren't visible to traffic because of snowplow, the snowplows. So the question is to coordinate the corner in which the snowplow leaves the snow differently from where the schoolchildren are waiting for school buses. And it's nice to have gotten that just taken care of without a lot of discussion hullabaloo or press.
Yeah, thank you for that, but it was very, it was very nice to work with Mr. Rivers on that matter, and we agree in two minutes, and we got done in, obviously, another two minutes, so.
Okay, can we get him to get homeowners to plow their sidewalks?
Right, yes.
Because I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it until after the cold weather broke when I took my dogs for a walk, but literally, I am walking on Quarry Street as buses are flying by with my dogs if I get home when it's still light out in the afternoon. And for me, who's a larger woman with a large dog, it's not so much of an obstacle, they see me coming, but for a small sixth grader or seventh grader, they could easily be overlooked and not seen. And some of those corners have a significant amount of snow piled up and no way for, to get out, so. And lots of either vacant homeowners or vacant landlords or whatever the case may be, homes that are in foreclosure or whatever, the sidewalks aren't plowed at all. So it's either walk-through, knee-high snow for some of these kids without adequate footwear in some cases, or walk in the road.
Well, enforcement.
Right.
Having been on the town council, it's a big issue, yes, so.
I know Peter Lee wrote a letter to the Chronicle requesting that, you know, people clear their sidewalks and stuff like that. I think it's something we might want to consider advocating for as a board.
Okay.
And if a bank owns a home, then they should be responsible for the sidewalk?
Yes.
If they're in foreclosure.
If we can find people for parking in the wrong place, why can't we find them as the?
Sometimes it's very, I will just say, it's very hard for the town to figure out who to contact or how to contact them, so.
But they know it's going to snow.
Yeah, but they may be in Florida. Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, some of these owners. I'm not, I'm not making excuses, but.
But they know their house is in Connecticut where it often snows.
No, but let me just tell you, it is, it is a nightmare for enforcement, but that does not mean we shouldn't say something about it. But we must also remember there are neighborhoods with no sidewalks.
Right.
Like mine. So, you know, kids are walking in the street no matter what, so bus stops are in the street no matter what, so. Let's move on to action items, and I'd like to make, I'd like to ask for an amendment to the agenda to add item number C, which is PATH Academy contract to the agenda. Could I get a motion on that?
I move that we add it to the agenda.
Second, motions been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Okay, okay, that's added to the agenda as item number C. So first item of business, recommended approval of the revision of the Board Policy for Americans with Disabilities Act.
So moved.
Motion's been made. I hear a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? This was in our packets, pretty straightforward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay, proved. Recommended approval of personnel recommendations.
Move, we approve the personnel recommendations in reference for.
Second. Go ahead, Ilga's got it.
We'll give it to Ilga. Any discussion?
Yet again, we lose, we lose to retirement some significant years in this school district, and that's always sad, and I hope we're preparing for that in the future, like getting postings out and stuff like that. Mary Rival was huge, and she's been central office forever, and Robin Steele and Sid Weldon taught my kids and probably taught your kids, Lynn, so those are huge losses to the district, but I wish them well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion's passed.
They're free to go.
Pardon?
They're free to go.
Not till June, not till the end of school.
Not till June.
Item C.
So item number C is the PATH Academy contract, and I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Garcia, to explain. This was, this was, we were not able to get this before just this evening.
Yeah, when we sent it to the other packets. So thank you to the chair and to the board members for putting it on the agenda. It would have been our practice to put it in the packet on Friday, but we're not able to receive it. It's a, it's a very straightforward contract with the PATH Academy. As you know, we've been discussing this partnership for quite some time. We have spent some time working with them, working with their leadership team. We believe that the program is going to be beneficial to our students, definitely is going to meet the need of students that are, that we cannot meet the need in the traditional scope. I have to say, the building is a beautiful building, beautiful building, beautiful furniture, beautiful design, and very, very, very welcome place for, for students. The, the contract is a very, 34 contract, as you see, for the rest of the year is only $30,000 for the district, and that's very, very beneficial if we start looking at what home tutorial and home bond instruction costs the district for students. In addition to that, we will have somebody supervising the program that is one of our employees, so students are, will be receiving their reconstruction, receiving more beneficial instruction, to say, instead of those being somewhere, receiving tutorial from someone. So not only is cost-effective, but it's beneficial to the students and to the district.
It's actually, it's $60,000.
$60,000.
Yeah, but for the rest of the years on, it's prorated. It's in the word, they're prorated.
No. It's $60,000 from January 1st to June 30th.
It's $100,000 for 10 months and $60,000 for six months.
Yeah.
Yes, and equals $10,000.
It's basically $10,000 a month.
$100?
It was $100 for 10 months, so it's $60,000 for six months.
Yeah. Prorated, six months, made of $60,000. Before we, before we can, before we go on with this, can we get a motion on the floor? All right. So this is a, as I understand it, this is a contract for us to provide alternative education for students who've been...
Yes.
Okay.
Per the presentations that have been made.
Yeah, to, to satisfy the state's law that we...
Right.
Have a alternative education for students who've been suspended or expelled. Is that, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so then, I think the appropriate motion is, I move that the board accept the contract with PATH Academy to provide for facilities for alternative education of Wyndham High School students.
Effective January 1st of this year.
Yeah. Effective January 1st, 2018.
Do I get a second on that, and then we can open it up for discussion? Second.
I, I feel, because I sit on the Wyndham Charter Core Board of Directors as well, that it's a conflict of interest for me to vote on this, and therefore, I'm going to abstain from the rest of this conversation.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yeah. I just, I feel like being on both boards, that's a conflict of interest to me. It doesn't come up very often, but in this case, I don't think I should vote on a contract.
Okay.
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 I have a quick question. So this contract is only for students who are suspended and expelled? Don't we already have students there?
Yeah. Okay. So they're different types. There are students that go there is because they withdraw from our public school, and they go to PATH Academy for overage uncredited, meaning they're overaged, they don't have the credits, and they cannot graduate.
So this $60,000 covers them?
Once, that, once they disenroll with us and they enroll with PATH, they become PATH Academy students. It does not cover that. This will cover our students that are suspended, expelled, or other students that we believe have tremendous behavior problems that are not successful in our school that can go to PATH Academy and become more successful.
So say, like, we currently don't have any students who have behavioral issues and need to go there, and next month, we don't have any students over there. Do we still have to pay them?
So we would like to have that, Mrs. Lassar. In the data that we have for the last, I guess, five, six years of the school district, we always have more than 50, 20 students. At what point did the district have 32 students that were receiving home bond? So we have, I have no doubt.
Not on our radar.
Not.
So, so this dollar amount that we're paying, which would be $10,000 a month for six months for this contract, covers all of the students who fall into that category regardless of how many there are?
What we don't expect, due to class environment, we're not going to send 100 students over there to class environment, so we are looking at sending, Miguel, we're looking at about 15, 20 students?
Up to 15.
Up to 15. Maybe, we can go beyond that, but, you know, we, ourselves, want to make sure that we create an environment that is, because it's still our program, it will be with them, but we are still overseeing the program there. We will be visiting, we will be taking a look at how students are being successful. So we don't want to send 30 kids at one time. And so the other thing is that kids will be in and out because some kids will be suspended for two, three months, others will be suspended for a month, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So this contract provides for services and furnishings, but who actually provides the teaching?
It's a combination of both.
Okay. So, so in addition to the $60,000, we're going to be paying staff who...
We already have a staff over there that provide, we already have a staff over there.
Somebody on our payroll that goes over there.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We already have a staff over there.
Yeah.
And in addition to that, we, we have hired a clinician, and so that clinician, that is our clinician, we will provide some services over there, too.
All right. So as I recall, I don't recall the exact amount that we ended up with in the budget for alternative education last spring. It was a...
200.
Hundred and some thousand?
200. We put 150 to 200,000 in the budget.
Okay.
150 to 200,000.
And how much of that have we already used in getting to January 1st?
Officially and formally, none, because it was designed for this project, and we have not spent anything from that. Now, if you look at the students that are receiving home bond instruction, that comes out of another line item. But the money for this, that we have sent this line item, we'll start with this.
So we've got 100 and some thousand dollars in line item for the whole year, but this is 60,000 plus whatever we're spending for the staff, people that are already over there.
But we, but we do want to put some technology there, so we'll have some computers. So there are some other costs, Dr.
Okay.
So we could give you that other cost. There were some other costs. We will not go over the 100.
Well, I know, I know, we have the budget already for this, so the budget's not, not so much...
That would not be an issue.
So it's, it's a sufficient amount of money in the budget to cover it.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Now, what about administration? We don't have to provide?
Yes. So we want, we want, because the state requires that we supervise, and so we have an administrator that will be part-time. Since the students are not going to be full-time over there, because PATH Academy students want to be there in the morning, and our students want to be in the afternoon, so we have an administrator that's already on site for us that will be there from 12 to 4 when the students are there.
So this is somebody we're already...
Oh, yeah. We already have them, yes. So it's not a new administrator, a new line item.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion that people would like to have?
Yes, question. So, so what if we had more than 20 kids go there? Do we have to pay more than $10,000 a month?
No. That will not happen, but I, but I will definitely have some conversation with them on how we accommodate the students, you know, that we change schedules, because we want to make sure that these students are in a small environment. And again, we're not having 50 teachers over there. So that possibility could happen, and that's when we have to come up and look at administration and have conversation. So this program, that a program that's going to be there by itself and nobody's supervising or overseeing what is taking place in case something happened like that.
They are still our students because they haven't withdrawn from the district.
They're still our students, right.
So we are responsible for them.
Dr. Garcia.
Yes.
Who is the administrator that's over there now on our behalf?
That's going to be over there, and our behalf will be Katie Fer.
Katie, oh. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have to say something crazy. So now, it's just...
Let us be the judge of that.
It doesn't make sense to me if we're just putting the students in a building if they're not providing anything for us at PATH.
No, 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 no.
You're saying our teachers are administrative.
No, 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 no. PATH is providing, PATH is providing the instruction to, to those students. So, no, yeah, it's a, it's a partnership, okay?
Yeah. I didn't get that part. What are they providing for us? We're just using their building, and we have to cover a lot of insurance costs, that's how.
And they have some other services, for example, the, the social and emotional services that, Dr. Vega is the director of their food services. So they are providing a lot of different services. These students not only need academic, but they need a lot of other social and emotional support.
Okay. That's it.
Anything else?
One last question.
Go right ahead. No, we're doing our due diligence here.
I'm trying to think of Katie Fer.